All right, thank you, Sarah. I hereby open the Springfield Planning Commission Work Session. We are also meeting in our capacity as the Committee for Citizen Involvement. Can we have a roll call, please, Sandy?
Chair Salazar.
Present.
Vice Chair Rhodes-Dye.
Here.
Commissioner Buck.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Schmunk.
Here.
Commissioner Stout.
Here.
And Commissioner Weber.
Here.
All right, excellent. Well, it looks like this is, seems like the most folks we've had in person in one time in a while. So that's great. I think we also have another thing to celebrate in our newly appointed Planning Commissioner. Welcome Commissioner Weber.
Thank you.
Before we get started with the rest of the agenda, we just wanted to give it a chance for everyone to share introductions and introduce yourself to Commissioner Weber. My name is Matt Salazar, and I am the current Chair of the Planning Commission. I have lived in Springfield for four years now, and I work in my professional capacity, I work as a project developer at Homes for Good Housing Agency, so portable housing developer.
Commissioner Schmunk. Steve Schmunk. I've lived in Springfield all my 71 years or almost all of it. I've been on the commission for about a year and retired.
I'm Alan Stout. I've been on the commission since April or so, and I've been in Springfield since 2016, and I have a small business where I buy and sell cedar shingles and rebar. So.
The Senator Thompson, so I've been on the, I think Commissioner Schmunk and I were, excuse me, we're all about the same time, about a year or so, so.
More than two.
I'm very new too, so I'm learning as well. I work for a state agency called the Oregon, or Business Oregon, it's the State Economic Development Agency.
Okay, sure.
I'm Andrew Bucko. We know each other from Rotary. I, to be honest, if you have last track, I don't, I don't have permission. That's a couple of years, something like that.
Two?
No.
Yeah, I'm on three, so you're probably two, two and a half.
Yeah, that's right behind you.
So you're the seasoned professionals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I professionally, I work in commercial insurance, as you know. Lived in Springfield for about 16 years.
Excellent. Before we get to you, I'll give Vice Chair Rhodes-Dye a chance to introduce himself as well.
Thank you. So yeah, I am the Vice Chair of this commission. My name is Isaac Rhodes-Dye, and I work as a Realtor in Eugene and Springfield, and I've lived in Springfield since July of 2020.
Bruce Weber, I've lived in Springfield since 2010. Although as I was saying earlier, I did graduate from Sheldon High School a long time ago. I'm retired. I was in commercial banking for 43 years. I retired a couple of years ago. Yeah, and this is, as I said, all the councils and stuff came on that I'm on the Link County Budget Committee and some things, and this is just, I want to learn some stuff that I know very little about, so. So I'm an open book to try to figure out what's going on, and I look forward to any input anybody can give me.
As are we all, I'm sure. So yeah, definitely welcome to the commission. We're excited to receive your experience and expertise and have your voice on the commission. So thanks for joining us, and we're especially excited to have a fully appointed or fully staffed commission now, so that's exciting for us. All right, Sandy, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Not for your work session and maybe for citizen involvement. When we get to the regular session, there will be some explanation.
Okay, excellent, thank you. So we'll get that to that in the regular session. In the meantime, I'd like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are recalled to provide public testimony. This meeting is a work session, as a reminder, where the public may attend but not provide comment. There will be opportunities to address the Planning Commission later tonight during our regular session at 7:00 P.M. But before we get to that, we will call our first agenda item, which is the Comprehensive Planning Work Program. Sandy?
All right, good evening, Planning Commissioners, and my name is Sandy Belson. I'm the Comprehensive Planning Manager for the City of Springfield, and I'm going to start this off first with an apology. So I presented on this topic to the City Council last week, and I prepared a presentation specific, you know, a packet for you, but I gave you the one I had prepared for the council. So sorry about that. It's largely the same, which is why I hadn't noticed, but there are a few subtle differences, but I will go over those as we go through. So this is not an action item. It's really just information about what we are working on and things that will be coming your way in the future. So a large part of our work is dictated by the state with new bills that become statutes and then rulemaking. So I just wanted to go over some of the recent legislation and describe the impacts on our work program. So the first area to talk about is with Goal 10, which is, this is statewide planning Goal 10, which talks about housing. The goal is to provide for the housing needs of citizens of the state. So buildable lands would be inventoried, and then you would, so that's the supply side. Then you would do a housing needs analysis to look at the demand side, match those up, and make sure that we are providing for an adequate number of needed housing units, price ranges and rent levels for our community that allows for flexibility in housing location type and density. And so our 20-year land supply would be accommodated within our urban growth boundary to meet the population forecast for 20 years into the future. So this slide describes how the analysis has been done historically, where we get that population projection from Oregon, Portland State University specifically. We project that need and then match it up and determine what we need to do. House Bill 2001, which was passed this session, changes that approach. So instead of just getting the population, the state is going to provide us rent levels, I mean, I'm sorry, it's going to provide us the number of housing units by income level that we need to plan for, and that needs to accommodate our, the historic trends, the underbuilding of housing. You may have heard that we lack, that we have not been keeping pace with the amount of housing that we need, and so we're underbuilt, and then we also need to accommodate the homeless population within our housing needs projections. So the state is going to give more of that to us as a starting point for the demographics and need. It will still be up to us to do our buildable lands inventory and to match that buildable lands inventory based on the zoning to allow for flexibility of housing types to meet that need. But this bill requires the Department of Land Conservation to go into rulemaking to change some of how we do that needs assessment and the buildable lands inventory. There's a component that requires us to report on progress and to meet certain outcomes, and there will be this housing production dashboard that's created where anyone can see how different jurisdictions are meeting their housing production targets, and then there will be an accountability built in where if we are not meeting those targets, then the state would put us on a housing acceleration plan to be able to produce, help us to produce more housing. So this new rulemaking process is changing not only how we plan for our housing needs, but when we will undertake that work. So our housing capacity analysis, which is that comparison of supply and demand, is currently due by December 31st, 2025. However, these, yes, sorry, go ahead.
I just have a couple of questions, if it's okay?
Um, let's, do you want to hold them until we get to the end of the presentation, just so Sandy can keep the flow?
So, but now we are going to have to shift that timeline because we are not going to be getting the housing needs numbers from the state until January 2025, and the rulemaking that is going on will impact how we do this work. So the rules for the buildable lands inventories won't be available until January of '26, and the housing production strategies rules will not come out until January of '25. So we're not going to be able to start now on our housing work like we had anticipated we would be doing. We had hoped that once we adopted the comprehensive plan map and land use element, we would go right into that buildable lands inventory and housing needs analysis, but we're going to have to put that on a delay. The rules still require that the housing production strategy be completed within one year of the adoption of the housing capacity analysis. So some other bills that will affect our work, so there are, and these are a little bit less impactful on a larger scale. They, these next bills are going to require us to incorporate these new provisions for housing, mainly for housing on non-residential lands into our development code. We could apply the statute directly, but it's going to be easier for us and for the public to incorporate them into our development code. So House Bill 3151 requires that we allow manufactured dwelling parks that serve a certain income level on non-residential lands. It spans the properties where the city is required to allow affordable housing, and we're going to get into some of the terminology a little bit later in the next presentation, but instead of affordable housing, we're now calling it income-qualified housing to include these other property owners. So the Housing Authority, a manufactured dwelling park nonprofit cooperative, or a nonprofit, sorry, public benefit corporation. So then a couple of other bills. 2984 allows commercial buildings to convert to a residential use without a zone change or conditional use permit. And then House Bill 3395 requires us to allow income-qualified housing in commercial land use districts, as it explains there. Looking forward, the governor is working with the legislature on a legislative concept that creates a housing accountability and production office, and it meant that bill will, if it, assuming one of the legislatures takes this forward, would mandate that local governments would grant adjustments to housing projects, and these adjustments would be to development requirements or design requirements. So this would be similar to a variance process, except there's no public input. It's just that the city would be required to allow reductions in setbacks or changes to the reform or not have to apply that regulation to applications that come in. This concept also includes a one-time expansion of the urban growth boundary for income, affordable housing on non-resourced land. That would not really help Springfield because the only places that we would likely expand would be on farm or forest land, being between two rivers and in the prime of the Willamette Valley, up against the Thurston Hills. That's really what we have around us.
That is, farm or forest is considered resource land?
Yeah, right. And then this legislative concept also includes a fair amount of financial support for housing, particularly around infrastructure. So that is one where, one area where I think it would be helpful going forward.
Financial support for who?
The public, like the city or potentially Springfield Utility Board, to be able to build infrastructure, assuming that there would be housing at an affordability level, a certain number of housing units that would be income-restricted for a time period. So the governor's really trying to focus on that gap of what the market provides and what people can afford by helping to make housing that people who can't afford housing on the market could actually afford to have homes. So that's where I'm going to stop that slideshow and then show you the work program. I've got a couple of screens. Go in. So this shows the work that we have underway or planned to be starting in the next few years. You can see in blue, it's the housing planning. So given that the consolidated plan, which is a requirement of the federal government for the use of our Community Development Block grant funds and home funds, that timeline is to have that ready and for adoption by June of 2025. So we will go ahead and start that work in early 2024, and so that focuses on housing and community development needs for both Eugene and Springfield. But we will delay the housing capacity analysis to start that in 2025 by first looking at the housing needs, and then once the rules come out for the buildable lands inventory, to look at that in 2026 with adoption in 2027, and then following that with the housing production strategy. So the climate-friendly and equitable communities rules, which also dictate a large part of our work program going forward. The two main areas that we will be working on next year in 2024 are the climate-friendly areas. So we will determine which areas would be climate-friendly and then adopt those amendments into our plan and development code in 2025. And we have until the end of 2026 to do that if we need that additional time. And then the scenario, we have a scenario plan that had been created in 2025, 2015, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, but it was never adopted. That scenario plan was created as a way to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So out of now, what we need to do is come up with performance measures that would show a carbon reduction, have those adopted into our plans, as you can see. And then in the outer years, we'll be focusing a lot more on our transportation system plan and code amendments around transportation. Other planning projects we have here, because we have shifted the housing work till later, it gives us a window of opportunity to start more work on the development code updates. So those of you who have been on the commission a little longer know that we had completed Phase 1 and Phase 2 of our development code updates. Phase 3 is the everything else phase. So we are going to, we have started working on those. We're going to do them in small chunks rather than one big package. So we are working on the affordable housing piece and then the annexation piece now. Next up, we're thinking would be land divisions and non-conforming uses, followed by mixed-use districts. We are looking at adopting our Public Facilities and Services Plan amendments this coming year, and our natural resource protections are, it's very, it's been a very slow process, but we're making slow steps toward being able to adopt those in 2025. We have a wastewater master plan that's nearing completion, and so be ready to go out for public comment soon, and that would be adopted this coming year with some special area studies following that. And those special area studies, I think, are caught out in that wastewater master plan of needing some more attention or a more detailed look. We have funding for a bicycle and pedestrian planning effort, but haven't been able to replace Emma Newman, and so we have been delaying that work, but hoping to be able to start that in 2025. And then, as you'll hear, or as you heard about from the capital improvement program, within there is the lower mill race stormwater planning, so we're looking at that as a major project in 2026. So with that, I will wrap up and turn it over to the chair to manage the questions.
Excellent. Well, it sounds like we have at least a number of questions already. Commissioner Buck, if you don't mind, we'll take one question. I'm not sure if anybody else, I'd like to just give everyone a chance to ask questions, so we'll take one question at a time from each commissioner, just so everybody, in case there's more questions than we have time for. So Commissioner Buck, go ahead.
So in respect to the code updates and as it relates to affordable housing, because as I'm looking at that, it looks like we're trying to look at code updates that would, that would help with affordable housing efforts that we know are coming our way.
Well, that, we're trying to comply with the legislation that's passed, is what we're trying to do, is incorporate what the state says we have to allow into our development code. And then while we're at it, if there are other changes that we see that we could address in those code amendments that are consistent with already adopted local policy, then we would do those as well.
Because I'm wondering with that, what those tools and those guidelines are for the code and how they, how they're accommodating different levels of unit income? So if you have a set of units that say rent for this level of income, but then another set of units, and maybe in a different building, that are here, sort of a different income level, I'm not sure the same construction and codes necessarily apply, or at least I'm wondering about that. So that may be something we could tackle in another session, but that's just what's coming up for me.
Sure. So the next item on your agenda is the community engagement outreach for that, and so maybe Chelsea and Haley can address that somewhat as part of that topic. But we're not getting into the code amendments yet, but you would certainly see those before they would be adopted, because you're part of that approval process.
Any other questions before we get to more questions from Commissioner Buck? Commissioner Schmunk and then Commissioner Stout?
Okay, well, along the lines of Commissioner Buck's questions, I'm curious about what our target is and what those subsets are within that target. So if you have the total population of Springfield, you want this level of income housing, you want this level. So I'm interested in how we define that. So I'm understanding our, our all income qualified is 60% to 80% of the area median income. So is that the same as the multifamily income?
The median family.
Area median is per person?
These are for households. And so the statutes use area median income, but then the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis refers to median family income, and they're very similar but not quite the same.
Okay. So what about, I guess, in terms of what, where's our targets? Are we targeting, or is that, is that going to move? And is it going to continue to move as the state decides something different? And then, and then importantly, how we assess that and its value or probability of accuracy? So that's kind of my question.
So, yeah, there's two things. There's the statutory, these house bills that are going to be incorporated into our development code as part of that process in the short term, and then there's the longer-term look of our housing needs analysis. So for that housing needs analysis, the state is going to produce numbers every year, every January. So when I talked about getting those numbers January 1st, 2025, there'll be new numbers that come out in 2026, because in the meantime, Portland State will have reduced, produced new population projections for Springfield, and so they may be adjusted, and it's possible that when, if I go back and share the screen. So it's possible that in 2026, after we've done the housing needs analysis and we're working on the buildable lands inventory, we may want to use those newer numbers that came out in 2026 before we finally adopt the amendments. So it is going to be a little bit tricky, but we'll just have to go there and look at what the numbers are.
If I could clarify, because I don't, I don't, it seems like this is a moving target, right? And so if we establish today sort of the tiers we want, and then 2026, we get there, and will we realize that we need, maybe they're all one-fifth? Do we realize that this bottom fifth needs to go to two-fifths or, making sense? In other words, in terms of income, would there be that kind of dynamic? Or can we establish what we want in the community, and then are we able to adhere to it or try to adhere to it?
So we'll be using the numbers that the state gives us, and we'll explain that. And so those will be what we are basing our adoption on. Then we are on an update cycle of every eight years, so we won't have to update it every year with those new numbers, but we'll have to adopt a new housing capacity analysis within eight years based on more updated numbers.
Okay, and I'm going to have questions regarding the, how we finance this, so that, and that's, so if I.
Yeah, I'll go to Commissioner Stout, and then we'll circle back here.
Sandy, just so I understand, why do we do the transportation system plan and code amendments after the scenario planning? Is it possible that by addressing the transportation system plan and code amendments ahead of scenario planning, we might be able to achieve some of the same, or, ahead of times, two birds with one stone? Don't, I'm just, educate me on this, because I'm not sure.
Well, the simple answer is that ODOT is tasked with helping all of the metro regions in doing this work, and they don't have the capacity to help everybody at the same time.
Thank you for that answer. I appreciate that.
There are also just like sequential requirements in the rules.
Okay.
So that you can't do certain things, all those certain things have been done, and they kind of.
Okay, that clarifies it. Thank you.
Anyway, ODOT said that they would be available to help us in 20, in the UTE Springfield region in that 27, 28 timeframe.
Charming. Okay, thank you.
So everything's on hold until then for Springfield, I mean, essentially?
For the transportation system plan? I mean, we could adopt updates before then, but then we'd have to comply with the rules when we did so.
And finance that to ourselves?
Correct. Thank you.
I have a quick question before we get back to Commissioner Buck. Knowing that that first housing needs analysis will come out at the beginning of 2025, do you think there'll be any, I mean, and not knowing what data and what sources PSU is using to compile their report, do you think there'll be any demonstrable impact of the middle housing amendments that we've just, that we've been, that have, that are going into effect by that time, or is maybe the data a year or two behind?
So Portland State does their population projections on a cycle as well. So they don't do it every year or every region. They, when we did our housing needs analysis previously, which used 2008 data but was adopted in 2011, we had very optimistic growth projections from Portland State. So we are not yet anywhere close to achieving the number of people in Springfield that we had projected we would have in 2030. So in fact, the current projections are lower than what they used to be, even though we're later in time. There will not be enough time for the middle housing to affect the numbers that come out in 2025. But as I said, Portland. But as I said, Portland State will have an updated population for projection for us coming out in 2025 that I think would affect the 2026 numbers. And I think that's where they're likely to jump higher because we have had more housing development recently. So I think that's where we're going to see more impact is on the numbers that come out in 2026.
Thank you. Commissioner Rhodes, I see your hand raised and then we'll get to Commissioner Buck.
Thank you. So I don't necessarily have a specific goal in mind for this, but my question is this. Portland State creates these numbers, these projections that then we live by. And is that like a closed process? Or if we wanted to, could we influence, you know, provide data and influence where they come out on those projections?
They give us a draft and they do ask for our input. So we can say, hey, we think you missed this, or we anticipate that. But in my experience thus far, we're not going to probably ship them very much. First of all, they're more the experts at this.
Sure.
And, but they are open to our local knowledge, especially on the ground things that they may not be aware of. But they, so Portland State does the population projections and they're basing that on building permits. So we submit reports to them every year of the building permits we've issued. And that's how they're using, that's the main data that they are using to do their population estimates. And then those estimates are the basis for their projection. And then every 10 years with the US Census, they make adjustments accordingly. The income levels, the household numbers by income levels, those are not going to come to us from Portland State. That's going to be developed, I think, I mean, in the past, it's been Echo Northwest. That's been contracted by the state to prepare those. I'm not exactly sure who's going to be preparing those, but they're going to give us households at these various income levels that will add up to the population projection that Portland State has given us.
Thank you. That was really informative.
Before I answer my question, I want to, we might be asking the same question. So maybe Commissioner Stowe, if you want to ask about finances? Because I went along those same lines too, but I'd love to hear your question first.
Yeah, well, so in terms of financing the the effort to define this and to change the code and all that. So from what I thought I was reading, most of the transportation stuff should be funded. Is that fair to say?
Well, the consultant's work will be funded.
So this, I mean, I guess, and I know it's, there's a lot, but the state mandated requirements, is that pretty much going to get funded for us to do or provided us with a code, a standard code or whatever?
I would say partially funded. So I mean, thus far, we did the parking amendments self-funded. There was no assistance. The climate friendly areas work that we've been doing thus far, the state paid for consultants to work with us this past year, but all of our staff time is self-funded. Going forward, we're working on, working with a different consultant now, preparing the work program for them. We don't yet know how much DLCD is willing to pay the consultant, but all the staff time is city funded. For the scenario plan, it sounds like there will be money to pay for staff time. Haven't seen an amount yet, so don't know how.
That's within what timeframes?
That's, the scenario planning is starting now and going through this biennium. So I think part of the challenge is that the legislature funds on a biennium. So they made a certain amount of money, they made $3 million available for the climate friendly equitable communities work. DLCD is keeping 300,000 of that for their staff. So that's 2.7 million to distribute to the other metro areas. But we don't know what the legislature is going to fund the next biennium for any of this work. We applied for grants to do the code work for technical assistance and were not funded. So, you know.
Yeah. So then in terms of, I guess, again, a general sort of idea of, I know there's been talk, the council has been talking about using city funds to support some housing, some targeted housing. And so do you have a flavor for how much the feds or the state might throw at that housing in terms of? Or and/or is the city thinking of other ideas other than tax abatement, tenure tax abatement?
So the community development block grant funds have been basically flat. Home funds likewise. So we're not seeing much increase in those and they're not at the historic levels of funding in past, you know, more than a decade ago, we used to get more funds than we do now. The state, you know, this, that legislative concept I was talking about does include funding. But the need out there is so great that it's certainly not going to meet all the need. But the state has been putting money into housing more so than they ever have before. How much they continue to do that, I don't know.
So I just want to kind of like a larger kind of view. If I'm understanding correctly, a lot of what we have is kind of hung up basically waiting on the state. So as I'm looking at this chart that you had up on the screen, that's okay. We can't really move forward with anything transportation wise because we're waiting on ODOT. We can't move forward with some of the housing pieces because the state has to give us the numbers and the income levels and all of that. And we really, until we have that, we really can't engage there in a meaningful way because there's a high likelihood that we would have to redo that work anyway because it has to adhere to these standards. And then so so we're hung up on a number of those levels. So our work really in '24 is really limited to some scenario planning and, you know, just kind of projects that we already have going and that kind of thing. And then when we talk about the affordable housing and annexations, that's just, that's just looking at code. But wouldn't that also be dependent somewhat on the numbers that we would be getting from? Or that would be separate? So we can do that independent of that. Because it just seems to me, as I'm looking at this, it's like, wow, there's a lot of big things we are going to get to, but a lot of big things we can't get to until we have those things. Transportation's three years off. Housing's at least a year off.
But, I mean, I think in that sense, it's giving us the opportunity to work on the development code and take on some of what we were, we would have been doing as part of phase three had not all this other work not come in. Communities in particular. So, you know, we're trying to.
Sure.
Yeah, address the needs and, I mean, it took me six months to really wrap my head around what we do about the housing because it's like, well, can we get started or not? What's the state going to do before I finally acquiesced? Because I really wanted to start working on it and finally it was like, no, okay, we just need to wait. And finally was okay getting to that point of, we're just going to wait. I mean.
So it's not like you've been, you took that six months getting to the process that's going through my head right now. It's like, okay, so how are we going to use '24 to the best of our ability? Got it. Okay.
Now, I mean, some of the council input that I can share that was in the AIS that you didn't get was that Councilor Rodley in particular requested that stop continue to look for ways to increase the availability and affordability of housing in Springfield. So we are working on the housing diversity tax exemption. We, there may be some opportunity to identify some other non-land use or non-regulatory approaches to address housing need. But we probably wouldn't have the time to dive comprehensively into the whole realm of options. So we'll have to be strategic with council about, well, what do we want to take on without having gone through a real big update of what is the real need out there? Mayor Van Gordon stated that we need to keep North Gateway in mind, looking for opportunities to advance planning for that area. So that's the urban growth boundary expansion area where we expanded the urban growth boundary for employment land that was acknowledged in 2019. But there's still a lot more planning work to be done before that can actually be developed. So those are some council inputs when this went to them last year. And I see that Councilor Doyle's also joined us as your planning commission liaison from council.
And I just want to know, before we have any other questions, we have about 20 minutes for the next agenda item. But I do want to take questions and we can run into past 7:00 PM for this item if we need to, or for the work session if we need to. So Commissioner Thompson, then we'll get back to Commissioner Buck.
I have a quick question on specifically slide seven for the commercial to residential building conversions. It just kind of occurred to me, so it's a really interesting concept, you know, building code aside. I was curious for conditions of approval such as accessibility, transportation, TIA's track impact analysis that would prior be conditions of approval likely for a conditionally used permit or zone change, say for a conversion of that nature. Is that now going to get baked into the code itself if the land use application is no longer required? How's that going to be addressed?
So we do have the opportunity to look at, like you said, some of those impacts and make sure that it's not going to have, you know, that our infrastructure can accommodate that change in use. And again, that's something that Chelsea and Haley are working on and maybe can speak to more in the next item then.
Well, I think that's a great segue to our next item. All right, and I will call the next agenda item for the community engagement or development code updates. It'll be led by Haley Campbell and Chelsea Herman.
Thank you, commissioners. So I don't have a presentation like Sandy did, but I do have the draft involvement strategy that I pull up on the screen. I believe, Sarah, I've been made a co-host, so I can share my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So Sandy went into a lot of the house bills earlier, so I'm not going to go into that unless there are specific questions. But just to say, this is a community involvement strategy for housing opportunities in non-residential areas. So the amendments, as Sandy discussed in the work program, will include those changes prompted by the state legislature and clarify existing code language related to income qualified housing. And that was a change that you did receive that notification from Sandy today in an email about the term affordable housing. And that change was made throughout this version that you're seeing on my screen now. So additionally, the work will explore opportunities to remove code barriers to those income qualified housing if the changes are consistent with current local adopted policies and the Springfield housing strategy. So staff proposed throughout this strategy some tactics for outreach that includes a project information posted on a webpage, project update shared via social media, workshops to interested parties. And then, of course, we would have the hearings and work sessions with the Springfield and Lane County Planning Commissions and the City Council and Lane County Board of Commissioners. So at the meeting, at this meeting, we just wanted to go over this involvement strategy. If the commissioners have any questions. And then some questions that you may have seen in the agenda item summary, but I'll go over them here. Are the proposed involvement tactics the best method to achieve the outreach goals given limited resources? Are there any additions to the key messages? Although there were some additions that you will see, given that we changed the terms throughout to really qualify and clarify that definition of income qualified housing versus affordable housing? That was updated in the key messages part. And then are there any additional opportunities to involve the community, given the adoption requirements and time constraints? As Sandy mentioned, these house bills have already been adopted at the legislature. So one took effect this summer and the other one will take effect in January. So we are at a little bit of a time constraint again to adopt and amend the development code to be in compliance with these house bills. So that was kind of a quick little overview of the project. But I'm welcome to open any questions from the commissioners and any amendments that they might have after reviewing the proposal.
All right. Well, thank you, Haley. Yeah, I'll go ahead and jump right in. This is definitely my world and I, yeah, definitely agree with council's direction to update the language from affordable to income qualified. I think as shown by our conversation previously, that the term income qualified is maybe wonkier, but definitely more accurate than the broad term affordable housing. I think it tends to, as we talk about affordable housing, it tends to muddle the conversation a little bit. So I like that we're using that term. I think, I don't have any specific recommendations for language amendments, but I guess as we talk about this in the community and talk about these changes in the community, I think it's important to, yeah, just the, the income qualifications are tied to area median income and that's very just tenuous and very, to the average citizen, it's just not a very specific thing. So I think as much as we can, and it's hard because the area median income changes every year. But as much as we can in our informal conversations with the public, I think tying that to a specific dollar figure, like for example, eighty percent of area median income right now is, I think I have the numbers right. Pull them up. Eighty percent of area median income for a single individual is $47,250 in 2023. So that makes it more tangible for somebody, especially a member of the public as we talk about that. And I think, and I think that just makes it a little more, yeah, I think it just makes it more tangible. Or even like talking about that is like, oh, forty-seven, two fifty for a single person. That's more than somebody working minimum wage makes a full time in a year. So I think that helps put it into perspective in terms of the folks who are served by these amendments. Great work.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, are we ready for a motion?
Can I clarify the motion that you're looking for?
Absolutely.
So you're looking for a motion to adopt the community involvement strategy as presented?
That's correct. And certainly willing to take any other questions or comments if they level up before anyone, if anyone's feeling any hesitancy about a motion.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I want to clarify the scope. Yeah, I, I guess, I, I guess I want to clarify this, the scope. I'm, I'm definitely on board with and understand where we're talking about income based, income, help me out with the term.
Income qualified.
Thank you. Income qualified, that makes a lot of sense to me, and I understand the, the need to kind of move in that direction. I guess I'm just wanting to make sure I understand the scope of, of the draft at this point is really to focus on the on drafting that, that piece to go forward, and I guess just to what end, I guess that's that's the piece that I'm hung up on a little bit. But I also recognize our timeline, so I guess I want to clarify the scope of, of what we're, what we would be motioning here.
So maybe I can help. So this involvement strategy is basically how we're going to engage with or get input from the public as we undertake these amendments to the Springfield Development Code to comply with the three House bills.
Gotcha. Okay, that, thank you. So I guess the only thing I would, I would, my only comment would be to be as broad as, as we can in nature about engaging the public. I think the more avenues that we have, the better, so that we can make sure that everybody's had an opportunity. But if there's no other comments or questions, I'd be happy to make a motion.
I have one question. Who do we, in the community, who do we go and ask or talk to? I mean, do, do we go to Homeless for Good? Do, I mean, what, where do we go?
Yeah, so in the package itself, I think there were a number of, of individuals or organizations that are, were specifically highlighted for outreach. Yeah, so I think that's page four in the middle.
Yes, that's correct. So I have listed here housing development professionals, especially those targeting low to moderate incomes. Builders, landscape architects, engineers, residential realtors, including the Springfield Board of Realtors and Lane County Home Builders Association. We also have service providers and community members who take an interest in the development of what we would consider income qualified housing. We do do a newsletter about or to those housing providers. I'm not familiar with how frequently we do provide that, that'd be a Sandy question. Commercial property owners and realtors, especially since we're going to be amending opportunities to build in commercial areas, and then, of course, the general community members. So we really wanted to take a broad look at how many people are going to be impacted by these amendments and looking at not just who you would typically consider like affordable housing or income qualified housing providers, but just the general community and, and developers too, who would be impacted by this.
Commissioner Buck?
Is there a spot? Invariably, in my professional life, I'm going to get a question about these as, as I work with my commercial clients. Is there a spot we can, we can, we can refer them to, to say, this is where you can give input, this is where you can get information? Is there, there, that's going to be included in this?
Absolutely, yes. So kind of our next step after we have this approved community engagement plan is working on our webpage. And that was kind of shown within our strategies or the, the tactics for adoption process. So you'll see that here of us creating a project webpage. Now, for our previous code amendment project, we use Springfield Organ Speaks, that was for the Stormwater Project that I came and talked to you guys about last year and this year. So that will, is a good project page for providing feedback. Anytime a comment is received on that page, we do look at them as planners, we do reach out to the people who provided comment. Of course, Chelsea and I will be working on this project, so we'll always have our email phone numbers and then our workshops available during the public hearing, so we're going to try to be as available as we can to answer any questions we get.
So can you give us a feeling for how this strategy, proposed strategy differs from what's been done, say, in the last couple of years? Is this kind of the same tactic, I guess I'd say?
Yeah, so I think Sandy might be a better person to ask about this one, but I think like I would probably clarify that this project, like the Stormwater Project, is basically a mandate. So with this, I don't have as much options or leeway to, to do that public outreach because we are kind of on such a, a kind of a tighter ti- a timeline to adopt these amendments, like we did with the Stormwater one. With that one, we were under like a permit deadline, things had to be adopted by a certain date. Again, with this, these amendments or, or these, these House bills have already taken effect or will take effect. So we're a little behind schedule, we're kind of playing catch up with that, and so that's why you're seeing the, the involvement tactics that you are of that. We're doing the webpage, we're doing the, the social media and the newsletter outlets, we're doing the workshops. So it's a little dia- dialed down from the previous development code update project, which was very broad, we had a lot of technical advisory groups. But we are looking for your input if you have some more suggestions about how we could get more input if a, a technical advisory committee is, or a it's the development code committee, is that correct, Sandy? That that was an option that we could potentially develop with this project, and that would be two planning commission members and two elected officials that could provide feedback for something like this project.
Right, that, for the development code project, we had an advisory committee as Haley is explaining, and that was really to give policy direction or advice. As Haley's saying, with this project, there really isn't a, we, we're not anticipating a lot of policy options. But if there are, then we could re-up that committee and use that to provide us some direction, and I think we would probably want to use it for some of the other type of code amendments that we have coming where there there is more discretion as to how we might want to develop the code options.
So I guess I'm kind of wondering, so we have a way to, I'm most interested in the community outreach portions, getting an architects and such involved. Do we have a way to assess our strategy in terms of its effectiveness as we do this?
It's a great question. I mean, getting input is always helpful. If you don't get input, is that because they agree with what you're doing or because they didn't know about it? I mean, that's always the challenge. I, we don't have.
Let me say, when we, in two years, assuming I'm still here, when we get here, I'd like to be able to say, okay, you know, this worked and this didn't. And so if folks could have their radar up to say, oh, yeah, this seems to be working, nobody even responded over here, anyway, so.
Yeah, and I mean, I think we did that in part when we did our evaluation of this past year's efforts, like with the comprehensive plan, map clarification project that Chelsea was managing at the time, we had an in-person open house and very few people showed up. And so, you know, for the effort, probably wasn't worth it. Whereas the workshops that Haley had for the Stormwater Code, she had, she, you remember better, but like 15 different people come to that, and that was an online one hour, much more cost effective and broader effect. And those were mostly professionals, as I recall. And being a technical subject, that's probably what you would expect. So we have been trying to do that measure, but for something like social media, it's some of these are harder to really capture, how effective is that? What's going to cause someone to pay attention or come to the webpage?
I think in my experience, these are, I think, the technical outreach because, especially because these are, this is a wonky policy, these are wonky amendments that don't appeal to the broader public, the, the broader public doesn't care that they, they, they like maybe the idea that a commercial building could become a residential use for, for teachers and firefighters and, and and police and but it's not tangible to them until a specific building is proposed to be that use and it's next to their house, yes. So I think I agree with this targeted outreach because it, at this point, it is the development professionals, the realtors, and especially, I think, the commercial realtors who maybe don't know about these amendments, who may have a whole new segment of clients that they may want to market buildings to that aren't, they don't know about those opportunities yet. So I, I agree with the targeted targeted outreach as proposed.
Any other questions or comments?
Happy to give you a motion up here in ready bar.
Commissioner Stout, did you have a question before?
Nope.
All right, excellent, ready to entertain a motion.
I move to approve the community involvement strategy and the agenda packet for this item as presented in attachment one.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Hold on a second.
All right, we have a second. Any discussion of the motion?
And just to clarify, that's attachment one is shown today with those revisions incorporated.
Yes. So the, the motion is to approve the community involvement strategy in the agenda packet for this item as presented in attachment one. And hearing no discussion, now ready for a vote. Do we have a roll call, please, Sandy?
Sure. Chair Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Chair Rhodes-Dye?
Aye.
Commissioner Buck?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmunk?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
And Commissioner Weber?
Aye.
Excellent. The motion carries seven in favor and zero opposed. All right, and with that, that closes, that ends our work session, and we will adjourn the work session. We're just about two minutes over. Does anyone need a quick break before we jump into our regular session?
We take a just real fast break.
Okay, we will take a five minute break and can reconvene at 7:07 PM.
How was your wife's birthday, Senator?
Pretty good. All right, thank you, everyone. I hereby open the regular session of the planning commission and will note that we have the same attendance as our work session prior. And it sounds like we have one adjustment to the agenda, Sandy?
Sure, so I hadn't realized that the capital improvement program was intended to be a public hearing before you tonight, as well as your recommendation. So we did not put it on the agenda as a public hearing. So we will go ahead and hear if you have any questions, but then we will schedule this for your, as a public hearing for your meeting on January 3rd. So actually, no action on this item tonight.
So we will not be taking a motion for this item, but we'll see if there are any additional questions based on, off the last work session. Thanks, Sandy. All right, next we'll move to the pledge of allegiance. Those in attendance, please rise. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now take business from the audience. This is the time in our agenda for the public to provide testimony on any topic relevant to the planning commission. And no public in. Excellent, so we can move on to our next item, which is the capital improvement program. And that will be led by Jeff and Stan.
Stan Petrov here, city engineer with Jeff Pascal, we need development director. As Sandy mentioned, you know, we're going to be coming back in January and have the public hearing, but we're here to answer questions or any concerns you might have on CIP. We did present to the city council recently and they didn't have any changes or concerns, some questions that we answered pretty much more or less the same as it was. We changed a little bit of wording in some of the wastewater projects, but really no, no changes substantial since the last time we presented.
Yeah, a couple of the projects, we just highlighted the upcoming, more highlighted the planning work that needed to come ahead of any sort of actual construction.
Well, yeah, I think it was a great presentation. The last session, I had a chance to catch up on that. Yeah, with only minor amendments, are there any questions until, before we get to our public hearing next session? I know there was, it sounded like there was good discussion last time of, of the, the work plan. Yeah, any additional questions or thoughts?
I'll ask one thing. I, I listened to the presentation and it was, we're talking about the levee out on 42nd and then I, and I want to bring it up because I happened to go by there last week when they were paving right there, and you were saying that was just to try to keep it alive and
Yeah.
usable for
Yeah, I'd say it's a Band-Aid, basically, for the future full project, because the levee does need to be replaced and a lot of that's going to be, you know, digging it up and who knows what all that's going to be.
Like three feet or something like that, you said.
Yeah, I think it needs to be raised. I think a lot of the material probably needs to be replaced. We're just really in the super early stages of looking at what that will entail, doing a study on it. So, yeah, we'll know more about that, but we don't want to do a big replacement project and then end up just, you know, tearing that up again in the future, so we're just kind of repaving it, doing some of the ADA ramps, trying to just do a minimal amount of work to preserve it for the next five to 10 years.
Yeah, because the larger transportation project is identified as, is more mobility, safety, that sort of thing, and so if you go out there, that levee and, and then some of the other stormwater features on the other side and everything else, there's a very limited amount of space, and so don't really want to go through a large road project, as Stan said, if we don't know what the levee structure is going to look like in the future and how much right away that's going to take.
The timeframe for the, is that Corbin Engineers, I know that is, or?
Yep.
Their timeframe is what their timeframe is, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're currently doing a lot of planning work in hopes of getting in a couple of the future legislative sessions, because that's going to take some federal dollars, obviously, to move that forward, because that's a multimillion dollar project to bring that in, but a lot of it has to be identifying what needs to be done in order to kind of get on those, any of those kind of earmarked funding packages.
Yeah, let's hoop stitch on through. I know Ken was saying that one of the first things was putting together an emergency action plan, which they're doing right now.
I keep on, I need to have my head on a swivel in case Commissioner Rhodes-Dye has a question, but yeah, any other, any other questions or thoughts?
So as I'm just kind of looking through here, I'm just trying to unmillenhead and organize the different projects. You know, last year, ODOT had given the city a mandate that came before the planning commissions on safety measures with Main Street, and, and so I'm wondering if some of those same if this, obviously, it's designed in some different things, but I'm wondering if it's going to incorporate some of those, those same goals. So this might look like trying to, as, as we're looking at more accessible in the transportation phase, finding ways to separate pedestrians and bicyclers from, from street traffic and those kinds of things. I'm just wondering if that's kind of part of the concept and part of the plan that's getting baked into this. On any particular project or just in, on our transportation projects in general? Well, I think that in, in general, I mean, you know, ODOT looked at a set of criteria and says we need to improve safety. And, and I think there's some varying definitions of, of what they're looking at there, but in, in general, we, we know that it's it's, there's, there's some things that work in, in a broad sense, right? Overall, if we can separate foot traffic and bike traffic from vehicle traffic, that's generally a good thing. And so I just wasn't sure if this, if, if in sections, we were looking at, at concepts like that. So I, I think I'll go back to what Sandy had presented on in, in the, in her work, which is the fact that as the city, we need to really update our pedestrian and bicycle plan to kind of understand where corridors and our routes and routes need to be. to kind of understand where corridors and our routes and routes need to be. So what I would look at is projects like what we're moving forward in one phase that we did on Virginia Daisy, which is a bicycle corridor to kind of provide a corridor off of Main Street, where the bulk of it is to kind of provide that safe corridor for bicycles and pedestrians that's parallel to Main Street in moving that forward. And that's where the bicycle pedestrian plan comes in place, is kind of identifying where we should be focusing or providing that infrastructure for those key bicycle and ped routes. In a broader sense, where we provide pedestrian and bicycle facilities on all of our streets, each street kind of has its own characteristics. And so like you see on our crossings, where we use the rapid rectangular flashing beacons, and in other cases where we'll use raised crossings. So sometimes it's the characteristic of what the speed profile is on the street, the width of the street, the type of users on that street and those other facilities. So when we get to those projects, we kind of evaluate all of those things to decide what the most appropriate treatment is in that realm. But I said, what you're asking in some ways points to the fact that why we need to do that planning work, so we understand what, when we go and seek dollars, say, from the state or the federal programs, what are we asking for and what are we looking to plan for?
Commissioner Schmunk?
So in terms of safety for Main Street, are you looking at, it seems to me getting traffic off of Main Street would enhance safety. And what I'm suggesting is corridors to the freeway or even south off of Main Street. So for example, I mean, there's an area, you get right on the freeway there. Downtown, you're going to take Pioneer Parkway. In between, there's 42nd Street, which needs work. And then between 42nd and downtown, I don't see a good corridor off Main Street to the freeway. So is, I mean, have you been thinking about those things, or is that sort of, there's no opportunities? Are you getting my question?
I understand your question, Commissioner, and I think where you're asking is how do we provide access, you know, off of Main Street to the freeway, and what's that? And we do have those arterials and collectors. I think where we have access, I mean, if you look at like 126, you kind of have 28th Street, 42nd Street, and then Pioneer Parkway, Fifth Street area, which is, those are your on-ramps, off-ramps to the 126 freeway, highway. And so I think those are our main corridors. I guess what I would ask is, besides traffic, it's like when we look at designing any of our city streets and understanding that Main Street's an ODOT facility. So we have a limited ability to influence projects. We partner on those, but we've limited ability to influence projects on Main Street, so because it is an ODOT facility. But when we look at our streets, we're looking at the whole characteristic of a street and providing services for all users, which is that whole breadth. So it's looking at vehicles traveled, so how many trips per day are we designing for? So what does that speed look like? And then also, what are we looking at for the pedestrian and bicycle characteristics? Because by state law, we're required to provide bicycle facilities on all streets, collector and above. I mean, that's just a requirement. We might be able to affect how much of that requirement if we had an adopted bicycle ped plan, which showed where our bicycle corridors were. So we might be able to say, well, we're using a local street if it's parallel or something like that as that. But right now, we're kind of held to that standard, similar to like what we're talking about on Mill Street, trying to figure out how to fit bicycle facilities on that street when we have parking on both sides of the street in a very narrow corridor or a limited rideaway without having to purchase a lot of other rideaway. I don't know if I'm answering your question, but there's a lot of complexities that go into that, not just in the planning, but in the design phases when we move any of those projects forward and all of the dynamics that are involved.
Well, I guess, I mean, I like the idea of moving the bicycle corridor off Main Street, but also an alternative would be for Main Street to have the bicycle corridor, if you could remove 25% of the traffic by allowing other corridors. And you Google the state and say, look, we can get people off your street if you can pay for this access here, for example, 28th Street. You could take it and go up to the freeway, that's a straight shot to the freeway. 42nd's a straight shot to the freeway. You take 21st, you take 14th, those are not straight shots to the freeway. So people are going to tend not to take them, whereas if you're in the 28th area, you're going to take that down, down, you're 28th, no, but 42nd, you're going to take right to the freeway. You see why my idea, I mean, in other words, I'm hoping you're thinking about sort of other dynamics of, you know, one affects the other. And I know you got limited funds, again, and that's, so that's my other question. So it sounds like wastewater, plenty of funds, but I say plenty, I mean adequate. What's the answer to getting more funds for transportation? Is that strictly a state thing, or?
So our revenues are limited. I mean, our local revenues are the apportionment we get from the state for the state gas tax and registration. So the city gets, it's apportionment from that. We have a local gas tax of three cents a gallon, so that's where our revenue comes from. And then our SDCs, our system development charges, and so those are really limited to projects that increase capacity, right? So if it's an improvement SDC, it has to be used for capacity, you know, it has to be used to increase capacity in that system, whatever that is, whether it's... And that project has to be identified on the list through the transportation system plan. And so, yeah, our funds are limited, and so what we try to do is leverage those funds, use those funds to leverage those grants for those bigger projects right now. So when we apply, when we put the money in the 2017 House bill for 42nd Street, it was estimated at $12 million. Well, that was six years ago, and I can tell you right now that that project's probably closer to $20 million today, and that's just off the top of my head without running through any of the numbers. So we're going to use, one of the reasons why we're kind of using some of that money to just kind of keep that deep road together, smooth it out in the short term, so we can use the remainder of that money we have sitting in the bank from the House bill 2017 to leverage future grants to kind of do that full mobility corridor and look at something, you know, look at what is the ADT that we need to design for? What is the safety mobility with the route, the traffic, as well as bikes and peds in that corridor? And understanding that we would be doing a lot of planning work before we even got to design and construction, just to figure out what we need to design for.
Last, last quick question. So instead of a bond, what kind of a gas tax would you need to increase in Springfield?
Well, I mean, I have my thoughts on that and looking around at what other jurisdictions are doing. So the reality is, is with electric vehicles in the move to that and just the number, what we're seeing is regardless of what gas tax increases are doing, the revenue is flattening out, just because the gallons of gas sold. So the reality is, is what a lot of other jurisdictions are moving to is a transportation utility fee, similar to like a wastewater, stormwater fee. I think there are around, at last check, there were 32 or 34 jurisdictions that had a transportation utility fee, and so that's just like a...
How's that collected?
Well, it depends on the jurisdiction, either through a utility bill or what. I don't, each jurisdiction kind of has their own mechanism, and that's one of the questions that would have to be answered, is how do you collect that? But that, that would be something that would then be the control of a council or whatever on top of the gas tax. But it just, if you follow the trends in gas tax revenue, even with what the legislation did in 2017, we're starting to see that trend now again, where we got this kind of bump in revenue, let it help pay operations, but the gas tax just does not keep up with general inflation as far as what it even takes to keep the streetlights on and keep the signals operating for electricity, let alone fill potholes, and then go out and do a robust preservation program.
And Council, Councilor Doyle, I see your hand raised. You have a question or comment?
If it's okay, may I speak to the gas tax thing that is being brought up and being discussed?
We don't take Councilor comment, but since this is our only item, main item for the session, we have plenty of time, so feel free.
I appreciate that, thank you. And the only reason I'm even speaking in is because I was on the budget committee that helped work on the bond, and one of the things that came up was about the gas tax. And the gas tax hasn't been raised since, I believe, 2003, it's maybe three cents. They attempted to have that raised by taking that out to the voters, I believe, in 2014, and it was, it went down in a ball of flames. And I don't know if it was because people saw the word "tax", and they didn't want to accept that. And it's unfortunate because the gas tax would actually hit the people who drive on the roads or the people that use gas, but they did not want that. And so there, we ended up with the bond. So it's not just something that we can go, oh, we're going to raise the gas tax. I do believe, and I think that our attorney could probably speak to this, that that's... I don't know that that's something that we could just, as a council, say we want to do. I think it is something that has to go to a vote, or it would be unwise to do that without a vote, so.
Excellent, thanks, that's helpful context. Christina, do you want to speak to that?
My understanding is that it doesn't need a vote, but as Councilor Doyle said, it's wise to put it out for a vote, because very often, these things are referred for referendum by voters anyway. And so if the council refers it out to a vote, then that sort of streamlines that process rather than having the council adopt something that then is, you know, has a referendum, and then it backs up, and that's sort of similar to what happened in Eugene with their payroll tax. They adopted it, but then it was referred back out to the voters at a referendum and more complicated than if it's just a straightforward council. But that type of discussion definitely needs to be led by the council and have clear support from the council. In addition, just being adopted by the council.
Commissioner Buck, do you have a question?
Yeah, so I'm assuming the answer is no, but curious on the stormwater piece of this, is there any impact or relationship between some of the discussions we had earlier around housing and increasing, you know, the code amendments, as well as just increasing housing in general? I don't necessarily see a direct correlation between the stormwater facilities and housing, but I just wanted to clarify that that work shouldn't impact the stormwater piece of this.
You mean increasing housing?
Yeah, as we're, as we're, as we're increasing housing and doing all of that, I don't think that it...
That's another complex conversation, because we do still need to do updates on our stormwater master plan.
Right.
And so we do have requirements under our MS4 permit and our discharge permit on stormwater and requirements to treat water. So it, I won't say it doesn't impact, so we do still need to plan for that, though, you know, the code requirements and the permit requirements require treatment on-site as much as possible, unless they can show that they just can't retain it and detain it. And if they can't, that means we have to find another facility that would become a regional facility. So we have some of those. It's tough for me to answer, because our stormwater master plan is not as, I guess, as well fleshed out as far as what it describes. A lot of the areas, which we've been doing, doing smaller basin master plans is it just identifies areas where we need to do more study and more investigation, so.
And the reason for my question is I'm just trying to get a better understanding of the, kind of the order of operations, if you will, what order things need to be done and what impacts what? Because the last thing that we want to do is find, oh, wait, we did this, but now we have to go and redo a part of it, because we got to head up ourselves in places.
I think it's always to have planned out and understand what you need in different areas. I mean, as a big example, or just as a example, we talked about the Jasper-Netron area, which is kind of our big greenfield area. We've had on the plan to do a stormwater master plan or a plan out there, just to understand, well, what facilities, where might those facilities go, looking at the zoning? So would not having that plan done hold up development? Probably not, but if we weren't able to do that planning, it just could lead us to some complications down the road, literally, when the city needed to go do work, or we might be doing duplicative work, or it just might put us into a box where we have to do something in a specific area by not understanding the nature of the area. We kind of jumped ahead of that and did some work in Glenwood, knowing that we were going to be doing the master plan and knowing that that's where the council's focus was on pushing for a lot more development. So just getting out and understanding the nature of stormwater, so. It just could lead us to complications or just make some projects a little more difficult or a little more intensive. So it's always better to be out ahead and have a good, robust master plan.
Commissioner Stout? Forgive me, I don't know, just a bit of an ignoramus on this, but can, for the projects that we're talking about, is this ever a capital construction request? It's made to like the state legislature for like the annual reconciliation bill to add funding to the, are there projects within what you're looking at here where you can request on the Christmas tree bill, hey legislator, can you please add this on that? Has that ever been considered with this kind of level of?
So like what, like, do you have a specific example of a project?
I don't, off the top of my head, there's any number, or at the end of the year, fiscal year, for the state legislature, there's any number of these projects that get done. But are there within, is there anything within the list that I've looked through here where, hey, it's an opportunity to make a construction request, a capital construction request, where it's something that frankly, the legislator could, you know, hang their hat on and say, hey, now this is the new, you know, so-and-so metropolitan wastewater system? I mean, as much as I...
Yeah, typically on transportation projects is where there's more programs, at least for what we get. I mean, there are other water quality-type programs, but the city itself hasn't tapped in. I know MWMCs use some of the interest-free loans, things like that in the past. We did just perceive through lobbying and working with one of our state legislators, $2 million from Mill Street, because we were short on that project. And so we did, were able to get money. So I would say at times, it just hasn't been something other than through our normal programs that are available. It just hasn't been something that we've gone after up until recently.
Okay, cool. Well, seeing no other questions or comments, thank you so much for that presentation. That was really helpful, and see you again in January. Thank you. All right, the next item of business is business from the planning commission. I know I have a couple reports from council actions. My last meeting that I attended, I didn't have a chance to report on the October 16th work session, which was a joint meeting with Lane County in which the council and Lane County Board of Commissioners jointly considered the comprehensive plan map amendments that we gave them advisement on, and that project is moving forward. I believe they're coming back, the Lane County is coming back to look at that in January as well. And then I also watched yesterday's meeting, and the most pertinent piece of information was in the work session. Jeff was able to give a presentation to council on transportation bonds specifically, so the priority projects that are seeking funding this year. And so if you have specific interest in the projects that are going for transportation bonds, I recommend that you watch yesterday's work session, because there'll be more information than we could ever possibly have wanted to hear about transportation bonds. Excellent, any other reports on council actions?
I gave, we gave several last time when you were... I'm just, I always have to search the list on here. Where is it?
So in this for context, Commissioner Weber, this is a chance where we, so each commissioner is assigned to have watched one council meeting, and we report any items that are of particular concern to the planning commission. We used to report everything, and it took quite a while, so now we're just reporting anything that are just specific to us. All right, seeing no other reports, any other business from the planning commission? Seeing none, any business from the Development and Public Works Department? I know that we'll have a January meeting, and that'll be quite a fun one.
Right, so it'll be a little unusual, because we will have a meeting in the council chambers, and we'll have either the police chief or someone else from the police department come and review in executive session some of the safety features that have been incorporated into that. So that is definitely an in-person type of meeting to have, or the executive session portion at least.
Anyways, Eric?
Yes, Wednesday. And then we'll have the public hearing on the capital improvement program, and we may have something else for your agenda that meeting... And then we'll have the public hearing on the capital improvement program and we may have something else for your agenda, that meeting as well from, that the staff will bring forward. It's also the beginning of the year and at the beginning of the year, the planning commission usually elects a chair, vice chair and committee liaisons. So I'm bringing that up now so that you can decide whether you want to do that at your first meeting in January. We can put that on the agenda or wait till a subsequent meeting.
No, on executive sessions, the planning commission does not, I don't know that the planning commission has ever met in an executive session. So it's a new thing for the planning commission. They are close to the public. Only staff who need to be included are generally included because we will be going over important safety features. It's important that you don't discuss those outside of the planning commission. Because generally they're less safe, the more people know about them. And please we'll go over that with you as well. But the, the other thing is that news media are allowed to attend if they follow the rules for executive sessions. And they are not allowed to report on anything that's in an executive session, but they generally are there to act as the check on keeping the topic of the executive session to what the executive session is approved for. And so as part of that, it'll be important during the executive session that the planning commission doesn't get off topic and discuss other aspects of public meetings or the council chambers that aren't related to the specific purpose of that executive session. You can have those other discussions if you want to follow up then in the regular session.
Thank you, Chris. All right, and Sandy, can you remind us, just so we're thinking about positions that we might be interested in at our next meeting? What the committee liaisons are, we have liaison to CDAC, Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee.
Right, chair and vice chair. And then we had mentioned the Development Code Advisory Committee. So you did appoint two people to that committee, should we want to re-up that committee? And we didn't do that at all this year, but that would be there. I think there's more potential for that committee. And if there's likewise interest on the elected official side to reconvene that committee this coming year, if we have the kind of direction that we need from the planning commission and council for the code updates.
Excellent. And additionally, we also appoint a council liaison. And so that's someone who is specifically tasked with especially being a liaison to Councilor Doyle. In case there are any items that we expect, any, any items that are coming before us that maybe we expect a lot more public engagement than typical, then that's a good chance. Or when we have an, an item that we've gotten a lot of public engagement around, that is then going to council, that's a chance for that council liaison to liaise with Councilor Doyle and say, hey, this is an item that we've heard from a lot of the public about. That, or maybe this is a contentious item that we were split on. These were some of the kind of, explain how we came to our decision and how we came to our recommendation as well. So definitely think of those positions over the next month. And when we reconvene, then we will have our elections for, for those positions and non-positions as well. Any other questions or topics? Seeing none, I now adjourn the planning commission regular meeting. Thanks everyone and see you next year.